Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Brathwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Rainey.
Alderman Burris. Seven.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, June 20th, 2011, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item is Mayor's Proclamations and Public Announcements, and I would like to congratulate the entire city of Evanston because we won first place in the 2011 Mayor's Climate Protection Award from the United States Conference of Mayors. I went to Baltimore to accept the award, and I will characterize it as a big, big deal. And it does not mean that we have solved all our problems with the environment, but it certainly does mean that we're on the right track and should continue to work hard on that issue. So, City Manager, you're next.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. I wanted to share with the Council the presentation of the award. We have the Mayor's remarks, as well as a video about Evanston that was produced by the Conference of Mayors, so if we can show those right now?
Now, for our first-place winner in the small-city category, the winner is Evanston, Illinois Mayor Elizabeth Tisdale for her leadership on the Evanston Climate Action Plan. This plan was developed with input from more than 130 community members. It includes more than 200 strategies for reducing greenhouse gas emissions across the community. Let's view the video to give you a glimpse of these initiatives in Evanston.
Oh, and we got money from Walmart.
Evanston is a green community because the citizens of Evanston demand that Evanston be a green community. We have a long, proud history of citizen activism, and the citizens worked hard on the Climate Action Plan, making sure that we did reduce our emissions, and they're going to make sure that we continue to.
We're the water treatment plant and pumping station. Throughout this facility, we have over 1,000 light bulbs, and we've gone and replaced all the fluorescent bulbs in their ballast with the new CFL bulbs, so that's helped to reduce our energy. Another factor was putting in a solar PV system. That system is located on top of our pumping station and provides power to the plant and has offset two tons of carbon dioxide just during the month of May alone. We have a green roof installed as part of that project as well.
Lately, we have just completed our seventh lighting upgrade project, and these projects involve taking older-style lighting and upgrading them to a much more energy-efficient way of producing the same and/or better light. And this is done in part with city funds, Illinois DCEL grants, Illinois Clean Energy monies. We have three large parking facilities here in Evanston, ran and owned by the City of Evanston. We have upgraded the lighting in both facilities, went to a much more efficient T8 fluorescent bulb and fixture, which essentially saved us over 30 percent. Firehouse number five is something we're very proud of here in the city of Evanston. Firehouse number five came online in 2009, and it was built simply to lead standard. Okay? As the project progressed, we applied for a lead silver, and as the project, again, after completion and the numbers started coming back, we went back and we reapplied for a lead gold status, which we attained. At this time in 2009, it was the only lead gold firehouse in the state of Illinois. We're very proud of that here in the city of Evanston, and one of 10 in the United States.
The city has been working over the last several years to help our residents to recycle more. We did this first by upgrading everyone's smaller recycling bins with the larger roller totes, as we call them. So now the recycling containers are about the same size as the regular garbage bins. So everyone has a great opportunity to recycle. Evanston's working real hard to get people out of their cars and more active. We call that active transportation. We're doing this by focusing primarily on biking and walking. In the biking area, looking to put bike racks in basically every facility and area that we can. We've already had several hundred additional bike racks get deployed in the last few years. In the area of walking, we're doing a lot to help make our sidewalks safer. One of the ways we're doing this is by helping to get bikers to walk their bikes on the sidewalks and really encouraging the use of bikes in our formal and informal bike areas.
I'd like to thank the U.S. Conference of Mayors for being a terrific organization. I'd like to thank them for this award because it's important to recognize Evanston citizens' efforts in sustainability, and I'd like to thank Walmart because $10,000 is a tremendous amount of money, and we will use it well. Well, thank you all very much. I was asked at my table earlier how I could have won the award when I couldn't even figure out how to get this thing on. And so, thank you for the mayors that helped me get this on, and I hope the video answered that question. I get by with a lot of help from the citizens of Evanston, and they do indeed insist on a greener Evanston, so that is what we're trying to give them. Everyone in Evanston thanks the U.S. Conference of Mayors and Walmart for this wonderful and quite good-looking award. It affirms our work in Evanston and the work of mayors throughout the nation to reduce our carbon footprint. 1,053 mayors have signed the Climate Protection Agreement. Mayors are not waiting for the federal government to solve this problem for us. Mayors have given national and international leadership on this issue. I am honored to be one of the 1,053 and to be a part of leading Evanston and in the city council to have a greener community, and I'm very proud to follow in Mayor Morton's footsteps. She was our mayor who first signed the Climate Protection Agreement. From using rain barrels, changing light bulbs, and weatherization programs to installing solar panels and wind turbines using biofuels and hybrid cars, mayors, city councils, and citizens are doing everything we can and doing more each year as we learn more about what can be done. And that's where the U.S. Mayor's Conference is so helpful in terms of providing best practices so that we know how to do more and more each year. The climate protection work in which we are all engaged is, I believe, the greatest challenge of our decade. The U.S. Conference is highlighting this problem and doing a tremendous job. I would like to thank you again for this wonderful award. At today's meeting of the Mayor's Climate Protection Task Force, I believe it was Mayor Finch who said that this work is a long fight. I'm sorry if I misquoted you. It is a long fight. The award is important, and all the awards that you give in the future are important because they highlight good actions in a long fight. This award is important because, of course, I'm honored to be here and thrilled to be with Nancy Pelosi and all the mayors and Tom Cochrane at this table, but it is important to get this award, not only because I am so pleased to get it, but because it validates the hard work of the citizens of Evanston and the hard work of citizens for a greener Evanston and the hard work of the Evanston City Council, who have worked so hard to have a greener community and to reduce our carbon footprint. This award says that the city of Evanston is on the right track, and we should continue on that track and keep on fighting. And so, I thank you very much for giving it to us and highlighting the issue, which is absolutely essential in this age. Thank you very much. And I should have thanked the city staff, who, as you can tell from the video, did an enormous amount.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Under City Manager Presentations, we have several this evening. First, I'd like to invite Devon Woodard, our Development Officer, to come up to introduce the first item.
Good evening. My name is Devon Woodard, Development Officer. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Manager Bobkowitz. We would like to, I would like to welcome a representative from North Shore University Health System who is here to present a check to the Farmers Market under Parks and Rec, as well as to the Police and Fire Foundation. As you may remember, the Police and Fire Foundation was established to really leverage more community support to support the mission and the work of our Police and Fire Department. And I'll turn it over to Chief Kleiber.
Thank you, Devon. I'd like the members of our foundation to step up, please. We have three, I believe, three members of our foundation here this evening. Jill Manrique, Fred Tannenbaum, and Bob Eder are here, and Sean O'Grady from Evanston Hospital, if you could please come forward. And Chief Hall, Division Chief Hall, could you come forward, please? We're pleased to accept the donation from North Shore University Health System. Evanston Hospital has donated $3,000 to our Evanston Police and Fire Foundation. These funds will be used to start up a community-wide CPR program. We needed the funds for initial purchases of equipment, and we are starting this program this week. In a few minutes, I'll have Chief Hall speak to you about the program itself and some of the details of the program. So, on behalf of the foundation and the city of Evanston and our department, I just want to say thank you very much.
It's great. I have the pleasure of serving as the Senior Vice President of Evanston Hospital, and as you know, we have a longstanding commitment to activities that support the betterment of health in our communities. So we are pleased to receive a request from the Fire Department to meet the CPR training needs and gladly make this $3,000 donation and look forward to hearing about the outcomes that you realize from this gift. So, best of luck with it.
Now, I believe we have one more presentation from Mr. O'Grady. Take it away.
So I'd also like to take the opportunity to share with you another project that we are partnering with the city and Friends of the Farmers Market. In an effort to make fresh produce more available to the citizens of the low-income communities in Evanston and support the LINK program, North Shore has made a $5,000 donation to the Friends of the Farmers Market. And this donation will essentially act as a match for dollars that are spent on healthy food only at Evanston Farmers Markets. So for every dollar spent, the North Shore gift will add 50 cents to those dollars to allow people to buy and make better, healthy food choices at the local Farmers Market. So we think this is a win-win for all. It allows opportunities for folks to afford better foods and build better health, and that's what we're all about in partnership with the city of Evanston. So it's our pleasure to make that donation as well.
Okay, if the foundation members can remain standing here with us, and I'll let Division Chief Hall say a few words about our program, CPR program.
Good evening. I'd like to say it's a privilege for me to address everyone here tonight, Mayor, City Manager, and members of the City Council. I also like to bring recognition to Chief Kleiber for opening our fire doors, as is evident with his outreach to the aldermen to join him at the fire stations, our rejuvenated ride-along program that our department has, the File of Life program that we are implementing with our city agencies that is going to be launched in the near future, and our CPR program that we are now launching. This CPR program can be viewed as a step with our department and the community coming together to provide the best possible care to Evanston residents. We all know in that area of 911, when you dial 911, there is a period of about three minutes before we get on the scene. Residents now, with the knowledge and the skill of CPR, can provide that service if it's someone within cardiac arrest. They can provide service to someone, first aid, who is choking. That will make a big difference. We all know from studies that that first three minutes of care is vital to survival. I'd also like to say about our CPR program, you can access it by going to the city webpage. We're going to be offering it every month, starting in June, all the way through November. Just go there, register, and follow the prompts. In closing, I'd like to say that working on this program took various city agencies to come together to put it all and make it possible. I'd like to say a thank you to Ms. Storley, Eric Palmer, our IT Department, for all the help they did, and of course, last but not least, Evanston Hospital for their providing a donation to our Fire and Police Foundation to make this all possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hall. We also have another announcement this evening, if I may just continue on here, Madam Mayor. If I could have Captain Peter J. Casey come up front as well, and Christina, why don't you guys come up forward here? We have, we've started, as Chief Hall has just mentioned, File of Life Project. And what the council, what you have in front of you that I placed a few minutes ago is an explanation of what this program is and how it will be implemented and how important it will be for us as first responders in the information that will be acquired when we arrive on the scene and those that are incapable of giving us that information on an ambulance call, for whatever reason. We will now be able to obtain that information in a secure place from this point forward, and our first responders will know exactly where to go to get it. So I'm going to let Captain Casey and Christina Ferraro, our Senior Services Manager, explain what the program is and how important it is to our department and our first responders. And again, on behalf of myself and the Police Chief, Chief Eddington, we appreciate the approval of funds from the Evanston Police and Fire Foundation for the purchase of the materials that are going to be needed to be distributed throughout our community. So thank you again to the foundation.
Thank you, Chief Kleiber, Chief Hall, Madam Mayor, City Manager, Members of the Council. I guess I want to stop by saying that about four months ago, I responded on a call for an ambulance assignment, and we went to somebody's house, and they were unresponsive. They weren't able to speak for themselves, and it was very frustrating for us as a crew because there are several reasons why someone may be unresponsive when we show up to their house. And we were unable to access any kind of information. We're unable to get any kind of emergency contacts, and the level of care that we can provide can be enhanced. And so I went back to the station that day, and I decided to try to create something. So I created something called a Citizen Information Sheet. And this basically is a sheet that would allow citizens to speak for themselves when they can't speak for themselves, and they would be able to fill out this information, including their name and various basics about their personal information, and then go into things such as their medical history, the medications they take, the allergies that they have. These are all very important things that can affect how we treat somebody. Furthermore, it can tell us things such as whether or not they have a do-not-resuscitate order. This is very important to keep the dignity in people's families. Sometimes they don't want us to initiate care. These are requests that people have, and if we don't know or understand that these requests exist, again, our care is not to the level that they expect and deserve, whether or not someone has a power of attorney, and whether or not this person is able to speak for the person that we're there to treat. Again, very important things. So there was a need here, and so we began to address that need. It's not a new program. The file originally started as the File of Life. It's a nationwide program. It's a nationwide initiative, and so we're not reinventing the wheel here. We kind of picked up on an initiative that has been very successful nationwide, and we decided to kind of put our own little turn and twist on it and implement it here for the citizens of Evanston. This is where I started to work with Christina Ferraro, working in the senior services over at the Levy Center, and she's been very instrumental in getting this program off the ground. We thought it was important to figure out who our target audience was, and we decided that seniors and members with disabilities were going to be our target audience, but obviously, this program is going to be available to all Evanston residents. After that, we decided it was important for us to decide how we were going to disseminate this information. So there's going to be several various initiatives that will be in place for Evanston residents to take advantage of this, including an online program that they would be able to download this and utilize it. Furthermore, at various city functions at the Fire Department or Police Department or the senior center will have a presence at, and then various public buildings throughout town. So it'll be very accessible, and we feel that that's obviously a very important part of the program. So the program would consist of this. It would have a Citizen Information Sheet. It would have a plastic Ziploc bag that the sheet would be able to go into, and a sticker that would recognize, make it easily recognizable to the first responders. All right? And then this would go into somebody's freezer. Okay? And that's how the nationwide program was initiated, and that's how we plan to continue forward from here. It was important for us to do something that's as innocuous as that because that way, we're still maintaining people's dignity. It's a way tucked in the corner there, but the most important thing is that the first responders understand that this program exists, and that we can access that information very easily and hopefully make an even more positive difference in the lives of these people that we're trying to serve. As far as when we're going to initiate the program, we have a tentative kickoff date for the end of July. Currently, the Citizen Information Sheet is complete. The bags are ready to be on order once the funds, again, through generous donation of the Police and Fire Foundation, have been instituted, and then the stickers, we're working through Allegra Printing to get those completed. And then I'm going to pass this off to Christina, Ms. Christina Ferraro, to talk about how we're going to launch this program from the Levy Center.
We're real excited about doing this. It's something that we've talked about doing for quite a while, so seeing it through fruition is wonderful. We're working with different groups, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, and some other various social service agencies, to help us put these kits together, and we're planning on having a kickoff event at the senior center at the end of July. So you'll be hearing more about that. And then we also have the senior service staff, especially Audrey Thompson, the long-term care ombudsman. She's working with Fleetwood Jordan, as well as the other subsidized housing complexes to distribute these. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Christina. So, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Mr. City Clerk, unless you have any further questions about either one of these two programs, that will conclude our presentation. So we're very excited. I want to, again, on behalf of the Police Chief, thank the foundation for their contributions and Evanston Hospital for the contribution, which will be used for our CPR program. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and Members of the Foundation. And Madam Mayor, one last item, and that's a presentation to you. I was privileged to represent the city of Evanston last week at an annual luncheon held by the North Shore United Way, and for the second year in a row, the city of Evanston was named one of the top corporate citizens of North Shore United Way for the efforts of our employees to raise money for United Way, so I'd like to pass this along to you.
Thank you very much. Here it is for all to see.
And with that, Madam Mayor, that concludes announcements and presentations.
Thank you. That brings us to citizen comment. Each speaker has three minutes. I'm going to call the first four names. If you would give your name and address when you begin. Joan Rothenberg, Andrew McGonigal, Jonathan Nusma, and Fred Wittenberg.
I'm Joan Rothenberg. I've never done this before. 1575 Ashland Avenue. Because I know my time is short, this is an oversimplification. The topic I'm talking about, though, is offshore wind farms in Lake Michigan. Oversimplification, but the main points can't be denied. Nearly 20 percent of the world's fresh surface water is contained in the Great Lakes. Fresh water is an increasingly precious resource the world over. This is no small thing. Wars are being fought over access to fresh water. This isn't going away. We will feel the impact here, one way or another. As people who live on the Great Lakes, it is our job to protect them. We do not know the impact of offshore freshwater wind farms in terms of the ecological systems. We don't know the impact on the Bent湖, which is lake bottom, Pelagic, open water, and coastal ecosystems. There is only one such wind farm in the world, and it is practically brand-new. We do know from other continents' 20- to 30-year experiments with offshore saltwater wind farms that there are at least unresolved technical and economic issues. We don't know the ecological impact in freshwater. We need to do our homework first. Had we done so before building the Welland Canal, which most of you know is the canal that allows ships to traverse the 300-foot difference in elevation between Lake Ontario and Lake Erie, if we had, and it's almost 200 years ago that the first Welland Canal was built, had we done our homework first, maybe we would have insisted that ships clean their ballast before moving from saltwater into freshwater, and we wouldn't have the 180-plus invasive species that have obliterated the native fish food supply. Let's see. Undeniably, the Welland Canal was an exciting feat of engineering typical of our American spirit. That's the same spirit that I think in some ways maybe drives our wonderful town of Evanston's wish to lead the way to offshore wind here, but should we perhaps encourage the appropriate agencies to support a small-scale environmental impact study of freshwater wind farms first before plunging ahead and opening this precious, precious resource to entities who may have little or no investment in what actually happens to the many precious aspects of the Great Lakes watershed?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk, and Alderman, thank you for talking, listening to me this evening. My name's Andrew McGonigal. I'm a resident of 2526 Princeton Avenue, and I'm an employee of Northwestern University. I'm here this evening representing that university. We have looked at the studies that were presented as part of the RFI, and in fact, the most complete respondent actually met with the university, and we examined closely their credentials and their proposals. It was after this that we, the evaluation that we made, that we determined that the economic viability of this respondent did not present a feasible model for us, and at this time, due to the costs associated with building an offshore wind farm, we would not countenance a study for the university or enter into another study with anybody else based upon the economics that we see currently. We'd like to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jonathan Nusma, 1408 Dempster, and I'm here as an enthusiastic advocate of the offshore wind farm concept. I'd like to point out that by the time this project would come to fruition, we will not be the first. We are not the pioneer. We are a follower and not a leader. Ohio, Michigan, New Ohio, Michigan, New York, and Wisconsin are all ahead of us in this country. Our neighbors in Ontario are even further ahead, not to mention with all the offshore oceanic wind farms in Europe and soon to be on the American Atlantic coast as well. When we're talking about offshore wind, we're talking about displacing generation either from coal-fired plants or from nuclear plants. And last time I checked, neither one of those really had very positive environmental attributes. So in terms of the effect on our freshwater supply, which I, as a resident of Evanston and someone who spent a lot of time on the lake throughout my life, I value that very highly. And I would rather have a wind farm than tons of sulfur, tons of nitrogen oxides, and tons of mercury being dumped into that freshwater every year. So, again, I'm an enthusiastic supporter of the wind farm concept. A native Evanstonian once said, "Make no little plans," and I think we should follow that lead. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Fred Wittenberg, 1726 South Boulevard. And I'm here to submit a minority report. I am on the mayor's review committee for evaluating the two proposals that were received. This evening, June 20th, 2011, you will be presented with the results of the review committee evaluating Mercury Wind and Off Grid's responses to Evanston's RFI, that's Request for Information, for a possible offshore wind project in Lake Michigan. We, the undersigned, as a minority of said committee, are not in agreement with the reports submitted by our colleagues for the following reasons. With regard to the only two responses received, Mercury Wind offers a conventional propeller-driven application, but Off Grid is offering magnetic levitation with no working application. Neither company has done any sort of work before. Neither has ever developed a project of any kind, much less a major project or a wind project, either on land or in water. Since it would be foolhardy to proceed further with either of these two entities on a potential half-billion-dollar project, one of the undersigned contacted FPL Nextera, the largest wind developer in the USA, Iberdrola, the largest wind developer in the world, and Mainstream Power, the world's largest developer of offshore wind. These three qualified non-respondents all said the costs of the contemplated project are prohibitive with no respect of recovering the investment made. Further, conventional onshore wind projects can provide at one-fifth the cost of offshore developments. There is no compelling reason to work offshore in the Midwestern United States where viable onshore wind opportunities are plentiful. What you receive from our colleagues this evening does not include this information, but details can be found in the Wind Farm Committee's April 27, 2011 meeting notes as revised to include these details. Further, even though this possible project may take place off our shores and is in keeping with our ideals for Climate Action Plan, Evanston currently has no jurisdiction or control over any such development as this. The lake bottom is owned by the state of Illinois. Unless new legislation is passed, any leasing arrangements will exclude us. Any development producing electricity would sign power purchase, interconnection, and transmission agreements only with power companies, again, not with us. As far as staging for such a mammoth project, Evanston can offer nothing. We have marinas on our lakefront, but no deep-water port to accommodate craft that are necessary to assist with such an endeavor. Our streets and roads, bridge clearances, load capabilities, turning areas, et cetera, cannot handle the support towers, propeller blades, generators, transmissions, shafting, hubs, nacelles, housings, cranes, and all other appliances that would be conveyed to a dock for barging out on the lake. With the above in mind, may we, the undersigned, suggest that the council close this attempt for now. Considering Evanston's fiscal responsibility to its citizens and the limited resources of staff and even volunteer support, the city should proceed with environmental projects which are under its control and have a reasonable probability of success. Respectfully, Fred J. Wittenberg and Joseph J. Jascooski, who was present here.
Thank you. And thank you for serving on the committee. Barbara Janes, Barbara Sykes, Carl Bova, and Ginny Rosenbaum.
My name is Barbara Janes. I live at 802 Coalfax Street. Mayor Tisdale, City Manager Bobcowitz, and members of the City Council. I am here tonight to urge you to put a halt to all your thoughts about building a wind farm in Lake Michigan off of Evanston. For years, when I was teaching middle school science, I kept telling my students that the United States must become more energy-independent and develop alternative ways to generate electricity. During all those years, I never gave that idea a second thought. If the U.S. can become more energy-independent and green, I believed, it must be good. I am sure that this is where many of you and other well-intentioned citizens are in their thinking. The problem is, when one starts studying the details of offshore wind farms, they don't look as great as we had thought. That is the point I would like to address tonight. A wind farm off Evanston will not benefit Evanston and will not reduce Evanston's carbon footprint. To the contrary, by disrupting the green space along the lake, building a transfer station at the lakeshore, and digging the miles of trenches to bury the cable to transmit the energy generated by the wind farm to the ComEd transfer station in Skokie would leave a gigantic carbon footprint. Then, when the electricity does get distributed on the grid, there is no assurance that Evanston would benefit from the electricity generated along its own lakefront. That does not seem like a good deal for Evanston's taxpayers. The Evanston Climate Action Plan states that Evanston's buildings are the largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, and thus, the largest contributor to Evanston's carbon footprint, in Evanston and nationwide. Thus, if the city focuses on reducing emissions from its buildings, we will make the greatest impact on the amount of greenhouse gases emitted into the environment. The plan goes on to list several ways that emissions from buildings can be reduced. First and foremost, the city can adopt policies that would assist homeowners and businesses to retrofit their homes and offices by improving insulation, using energy-efficient heating and cooling, purchasing more energy-efficient appliances, and even installing solar panels on building roofs. Just the whole list you saw in there, only on a broader scale. These steps are not easy, are not sexy, or headline-grabbing, but they would achieve important goals. In addition to, important goals. In addition to reducing the city's carbon footprint, it would create many years of skilled and less skilled jobs for Evanston residents. There are numerous grants and incentives for individuals and companies to improve their building's efficiency. Construction companies would need more employees. They would hire more workers, and should be encouraged to create apprenticeship programs to hire less skilled workers.
Barbara, can you wrap it up, please?
Just let me finish this paragraph. Lord knows we need to reduce the unemployment. It would then reduce business and homeowners' energy costs. It would revitalize Evanston's housing stock. This approach I've described would make a greater positive impact on the citizens of Evanston than a wind farm in the lake. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got copies with a couple of other paragraphs that I'll pass around.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Sykes, 3007 Thayer. I'd like to say that I felt that there is a number of very crucial issues that weren't brought to the City Council's attention in the final report of the mayor's wind farm committee. And so, I personally respectfully request all proceedings for offshore wind development to end immediately. And I'll just give a handful of the reasons why. First and foremost, the U.S. has a lot to learn from Europe. That's who's the established leader in wind energy for the past three decades, the past 20 for offshore wind farm. The Netherlands, Spain, Germany, and Italy have either abandoned or slashed wind energy subsidies. Why? Because their experiences have proven wind energy is too expensive, unreliable, underperforms, is not cost-effective, negatively impacts industries that have a high electric use, and subjects rate and taxpayers to unacceptable risks. Holland has abandoned the ECU-wide target of producing 20% of its domestic power from renewables. Similarly, a vote's been proposed here, Ontario, who led the Great Lakes offshore wind development, has recently placed a moratorium on all offshore wind projects in the Great Lakes. Why? Because of lack of scientific data on the potential impact on freshwater lakes. The only existing wind farm in freshwater just recently opened in Sweden, and it's a very small one. And it's clearly not enough of a track record to cite as reliable precedent. Investors brought into the dream of a clean renewable energy financed by rate and taxpayers have come to a great shock given these recent events around the world. Governments change their mind when it doesn't work. In light of Europe's world dominance in world energy and significant of their dramatic turnaround, this has created significant uncertainty for investors worldwide. It should be a clear message for us not to make the same mistakes. Heavily subsidized by taxpayer and energy consumers, U.S. government incentives have shifted the bulk of wind energy project risks onto rate and taxpayers. The public is now the largest buyer, developer, investor of renewable energy, but the profits remain privatized, while all parties involved in the project's construction and operations and management are, for the most part, free to inflate prices but share limited or no responsibility for meeting performance standards. Lawsuits on environmental impact on land-based wind farms fill the courts worldwide. And again, we need to keep a global perspective. After years of construction of Cape Wim here in the United States, it still hasn't begun yet and still faces 11 state and federal lawsuits and appeals filed by opponents.
I'm sorry, can you begin to wrap it up?
Yeah, I'll wrap it up. Although Cape Energy cleared its final regulatory hurdles, no utility company yet is willing to bet billions in ratepayer cash for the unsold 50% of this controversial offshore wind project. Bonneville Power Administration is a federal agency and it manages three-quarters of the Northwest Transmission Lines. It's battling in the courts with the wind developer there. The reason why is the BPA must lower power production when the supply is too high, and they've determined they will shut down nuclear, natural gas, nuclear, and coal production first. And if that doesn't work, and only if that doesn't work, they shut off wind.
I'm sorry, that's more than four minutes.
But the wind industry has taken them to court because they want to get paid if the wind blows or not.
Could you please wrap it up?
The last thing I'd like to say, because of the environmental damage that's being caused by wind turbines, it is a substantial, ongoing, devastating environmental damage because of the toxic and radioactive waste from rare-earth elements. This is a secret. This is the behind green energy.
I'm sorry, but the other speakers aren't going to have enough time if you keep going.
We should all be concerned about the environmental impact, if it's in our backyard or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Impressed by all those negative statements. I'm Ginny Rosenbaum, 1133 Judson Avenue. My concern is the lack of geological information in the report that I read. I think there are too many cases where people say, "Oops, I didn't know that could happen." And I'd like to know how deeply these pillars would have to be driven into the lake bottom. What is the lake bottom made of? I remember the Chicago River, just with one piling being driven into it to replace a rotted one, and there's a flood in all the basements in Chicago. Nobody thought about it. And the lake system is so valuable, we can't, I don't think we should mess around with it. We need it. And we can't have things leaking into it and making it polluted. I didn't prepare a statement.
That's fine. You're doing fine.
As much as that. So I was wondering, what's the undisturbed margin there? I couldn't find anything about the lake bottom except something from 1899, and I think we probably could find more recent information, but what's the margin of error? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carl Bova, 1322 Rosalie Street. Good evening, everybody. As a civil engineer with over 30 years of professional experience, about half of that time devoted to small and large water resources projects, ranging from the Chicago Shoreline Protection Project, to small and large hydropower projects, to waterway planning and environmental permitting work. I must voice my objection to any further consideration by the city of this wind project on the lake. It's been my experience that any project on water costs about three or four times as much as similar project tasks performed on dry land. This has always been the case and will be so in the future. The cost for lake wind power will not drop in time, as some might suggest. It is customary and usual for a project that is on a waterway to be dependent upon water to be feasible. In other words, the shore protection project needs the shoreline. The dam project needs the river for power production. Not so with wind power on the lake. Wind power is three to five times more attractive on land than on water. We are not being good stewards of the hard-earned and scarce tax dollars that we have if we choose to continue in pursuit of this project, especially if three to five times more power can easily be generated from land. You can't even maintain turbines on the lake for three or four months each year. Should Evanston pursue this project via grant funding, the unintended consequence of a push for this funding will surely result in our inability to obtain funding for other much more needed infrastructure and social service dollars from state or federal sources for years to come. We can't afford this consequence. Furthermore, a lease of the lake bottom by Evanston will introduce significant new general liability exposure for the city. We can't afford that. As others have stated, there appear to be no significant benefits to the citizens of Evanston, no direct or indirect jobs of any significance. Please drop this project immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jean Lindwald, Junad Rizki, Padma Rayo, and BK Rayo. I think everybody is listening.
Hello.
Go ahead. Thank you.
We also have the report on our laptops, so the things that people are referencing is all, that's where we have the report. Of course not, but people are referencing the report, the wind farm report. Of course not, but people are referencing the report, the wind farm report, sure. I'm just mentioning that we have that on our laptops.
Thank you. We are listening, I promise.
Hi, thank you.
And we will listen to you, Jean.
Thank you very much, and I'm passing out copies of my comments. I'm Jean Lindwall, 625 Library Place. If we want to be a truly sustainable community, then the actions taken to support the Climate Action Plan need to make economic sense. Not everything included in Evanston's Climate Action Plan is a good idea. The plan focuses exclusively on reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and this emphasis does not necessarily mean a reduction of energy costs, especially when it comes to the proposed offshore wind farm. And from what I've read recently, the carbon footprint of building wind farms is quite significant, even if the wind itself is carbon-free. Illinois has mandated that twenty-five percent of the state's energy come from renewable sources by 2025, and that seventy-five percent of this renewable energy come from wind. According to the Illinois Wind Energy Association, Illinois now has over 2,000 megawatts of installed capacity, enough to power 600,000 homes, with another 12,000 megawatts of new wind in some stage of planning or approval. Enough electricity for 3.6 million more households. Since there are approximately 4.8 million households in Illinois, a reasonable question would be, seem to be, how important Lake Michigan wind is to achieving the state's renewable energy mandate. Projected costs for offshore wind appear to be in the range of eighteen to twenty-four cents per kilowatt hour versus five to six cents for land-based wind. Wouldn't the greenhouse gas reduction be just as great if ComEd was required to provide land-based wind to Evanston customers at a much lower cost instead of pursuing construction of an offshore wind farm? What are the economic benefits for Evanston, and perhaps more importantly, what are Evanston's potential costs and liabilities? There are a huge number of outstanding questions with respect to the viability of a Lake Michigan wind farm. The city council should drop further consideration of this idea until the Lake Michigan Offshore Wind Energy Council completes its report to the Illinois Legislature and begins to answer at least some of these questions. If the mayor and city council insist on lobbying for a representative on the council as recommended by the wind farm committee, please make sure that maintaining the safety of our public water supply is as high a priority for our representative as benefiting a private wind farm developer or burnishing Evanston's green image. Wind farms provide substantial economic benefits to rural Illinois counties: property taxes for local tax districts, payments to property owners which result in additional dollars pumped into the local economy, and jobs in meaningful numbers for rural areas. In contrast, with offshore wind, the economic benefits are almost negligible since no property taxes will be generated, the state will most likely receive any leasehold payments, and the number of jobs that might be created in the Chicago area is dwarfed by the size of the regional employment base. Thank you.
Thank you.
Junaid Rizki. Tonight, I will address the public official's lack of fiscal responsibility in setting sound public policy. Not going to speak about wind farms, because I think enough of the speakers have already addressed that. When any public official tells me an action here is going to cost the taxpayers of Evanston not one penny, it immediately interests me. The city's recent lobbying efforts for a low-income clinic here in Evanston appear to be such a misrepresentation. A safe guess, we've already spent ten to fifteen thousand dollars on lobbying trips to Washington and staff time. I am not against low-income federally-funded clinics for the poor, but I'm against Evanston public officials who don't understand real costs. Is there any really need for this clinic here in Evanston, or can residents go across the border to Chicago? If Evanston attains funds for this clinic, will really other areas of the country that have other, really more serious health problems be denied? I have been told the grant for the six hundred thousand dollars, if approved, the clinic will not be opened in the civic center, and that the civic center was not a desired option. I would say opening the clinic in the basement of the civic center is a totally unrealistic option. To open a functioning clinic in the basement could easily approach two million dollars, money the city does not have. I requested and was given a tour of the basement of the civic center. I would recommend this health department be moved out of that space, because there appears to me to be mold and ventilation problems down in that space alone. When I left the space, my throat was hurting and my sinuses. The city does not need to hire a consultant to tell you there's not a problem, they need to correct the problems. But let me get back to another assertion, the city saying that the clinic would be grandfathered in that space because there was a clinic there before. There are serious building code and ADA problems down there. The hallway that serves the so-called exam rooms down there, that are really like closets, wouldn't get a wheelchair through there, basically, couldn't turn into the exam rooms. There are numerous other problems. Let me suggest if the city has anyone qualified on staff in the building department, they do a brief, they bear a brief report on this and tell you really what all the problems are. An excuse, staff is busy, and we need a consultant, is not very realistic. Public officials here need to start to act more fiscally responsible and deal with the fiscal reality of our three-and-a-half-million-dollar budget shortfall this year, rather than taking trips to Washington to lobby. I would suggest you have Wally set up a tour of the basement and let him explain to you how he's going to operate this clinic without any expenditure of the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Padma Rao. I live at 2246 Sherman Avenue, and I'm speaking regarding the Kendall re-subdivision. Two agenda items tonight, the Climate Action Plan update and the Wind Farm Committee report, relate to environmental protection and sustainability. Some of the recent actions by this council to promote environmental responsibility include the Green Building Ordinance, Elm Tree Injection Program, and discussions regarding regulation of shopping bags. The Illinois Constitution grants every person the right to a healthful environment as a matter of public policy. The city's zoning code states that its purposes include promoting public health and safety, securing pure air, and encouraging the preservation and enhancement of natural resources and natural features. The code specifically mandates that existing trees shall be maintained in place wherever possible. This council must know the scientific facts, that trees produce the oxygen that we all need to survive, and that trees remove harmful carbon dioxide gas from the air. This council must be aware of global efforts to stop and reverse deforestation, based on worldwide acceptance of these scientific facts. But this council's vote in the Kendall re-subdivision to kill over two dozen mature trees directly conflicts not only with this council's own environmental initiatives, but also with applicable law and scientific facts. This council never cited any scientific study analyzing the ecological impact of killing over two dozen trees in a one-block area. This council provided no data to support its vote to destroy so many oxygen-producing trees that contribute to our constitutional right to a healthful environment. This council never provided any data to justify its vote to sacrifice the public health, pure air, and some of our oldest living connections to history. Indeed, this council cited no public benefit whatsoever to support its vote to needlessly kill so many defenseless trees. I demand that each and every member of this council clearly and publicly cite the laws and data that they relied upon in voting on the Kendall matter. How does this council's vote provide and maintain our constitutional right to a healthful environment, or advance this council's own goals of environmental responsibility and sustainability? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, and the members of the council, good to see you again. The other day, I met one of the council members at the farmer's market. After exchanging a few friendly words, I noticed we have something in common. We were both carrying our own reusable shopping bags, so we could avoid the need to kill another tree. As you and the council members know, the trees are an integral part of our ecological system. We depend on the oxygen they supply for our very survival. Not only that, they also take in the carbon dioxide we exhale. Thus, they balance the quality of the air we breathe. With each killing of a tree, this balance gets disturbed. Now, my question to the Leonard council, with all due respect to the members, how much thought process was involved in passing the Kendall property re-subdivision? This re-subdivision involves the killing of more than twenty-four trees. These trees have been the source of ecological balance since before the city came to exist. They never took a holiday, they never asked for anything, they never encroached anybody's property. Then, a developer comes here and asks the city, and the city gives him the lives of these selfless trees, and then washes its hands. It is surprising to know that this is happening in Tree City, USA. It is not just disturbing, but unacceptable to any reasonable civilization. Just a little request from all of you. Before you go to bed, imagine a city with no trees, but just rows and rows of narrow houses and badly engineered alleys. What a painful thought, what a painful sight. Before I say goodnight, madam, may you all breathe well. Thank you, and see you again.
Thank you. Next is Special Order of Business, Climate Action Plan update.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, we have several presentations for you this evening. The first two deal with aspects of the city's climate action plan. Catherine Hurley, our Sustainable Programs Coordinator, is here to give you and the community an update on where we stand with the implementation of the Climate Action Plan.
Honorable Mayor Tisdale, City Manager Bobquid, and members of the city council, Catherine Hurley, Sustainable Programs Coordinator. I'm happy to be here tonight to give an update to you on the Evanston Climate Action Plan implementation. The Evanston City Council unanimously signed the US Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement in October of 2006. To help meet this commitment, the Evanston Climate Action Plan was developed in 2008 as a collaborative effort between over 130 members of the Evanston community, the City of Evanston, and the Network for Evanston's Future. The goal of the plan is to reduce the community-wide greenhouse gas emissions by thirteen percent below the 2005 levels. The plan is divided into six topic areas, as shown here on the slide, and does include over 220 strategies that the city and the community could implement to help to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. It should be noted that the strategies do include both quick wins, easy to implement, and low cost, as well as longer-term, more innovative projects. Since the Evanston Climate Action Plan was developed in 2008, the city has made steady progress every year to implement the plan and its approximate 200 strategies. Based on input from all the city departments and community partners, 115 of the strategies identified in the plan have been initiated, completed, or in progress of being completed. A breakdown of the numbers of strategies either completed, ongoing, or in progress are listed by each of the main categories below. There are, as I said, over 220 strategies, so there's a lot of different things I could talk about, but I'll just give a few quick highlights in this section. The city and partners have distributed over 20,000 compact fluorescent light bulbs to residents and to people in the community, which use 75% less energy than traditional light bulbs. And of special note, over 950 CFLs were distributed this past weekend by Citizens Brunner Evanston at the Custard Fair. So thanks for being out there all weekend and handing out those light bulbs. In addition, efforts have been underway to increase the number of car-share cars in Evanston, such as IGO and Zipcar, which help to reduce transportation footprint. The city's also worked to increase bicycle parking facilities, to levered state and federal funds to help expand the city's recycling program, as well as to help, not only for residential recycling, but get more recycling cans out in our business districts, which hopefully later this month, Public Works will have the new fancy cans out in the business districts. Also, with the support of city council, additional work has been on some of the harder, more innovative, and controversial projects, including research on strategies to reduce the environmental impacts of shopping bags, and investigation of the offshore wind project. But the city council and the community should really be commended on the wide variety of projects that have been investigated, and many of them completed. Progress on the Evanston Climate Action Plan can also be seen not only in the implementation and the completion of strategies, but also in the inventory of our community greenhouse gas emissions. This pie chart represents the breakdown of the Evanston community greenhouse gas emissions. As you can see, 55% of the greenhouse gas emissions are related to commercial and industrial energy usage, and 25% related to residential energy usage. So yes, about 80% of our community's entire greenhouse gas emissions is related to residential and commercial energy usage, which is coming from our buildings. So first, looking at the emissions associated with our municipal operations, the city has reduced our greenhouse gas emissions by 22% since 2005, and this was a main component that was part of the City of Evanston and Mayor Tisdale receiving the US Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Award, because 22% is pretty significant. This reduction is a result of 23% in the area of energy usage and 14% associated with transportation emissions. Now, these reductions, as was stated previously, are not easy and has taken a long time, but they are the direct result of the city's operational efficiencies, work that the city council has supported, as well as projects that staff has identified. As mentioned in the video, we had between six and seven lighting and energy efficiency projects completed in just the last year alone, including projects at the Water Treatment Plant, the Chandler Recreation Center, Church Street Parking Garage, the Cron Recreation Center, the Ecology Center, and Noi's Cultural Arts Center. In addition, the city's efforts to reduce the fleet vehicle size, to right-size our vehicles, and to replace our older vehicles with more efficient ones have also made a significant contribution, as shown in the 14%. So in total, for the city municipal operations, we've reduced emissions by 5,309 metric tons, which is equivalent to removing 944 passenger vehicles from the road every year. At the community-wide implementation of the Climate Action Plan, we can also see a measurable reduction in emissions for community energy usage. The aggregate of both residential and commercial energy, we've seen a reduction in 2%. In addition, the efforts of the whole community to increase recycling has seen an increase in the recycling volume of 12% since 2005. And as you may have seen in the video, our curbside recycling program, the containers for the recycling are almost as large as the containers for the garbage, thereby really encouraging people to maximize their recycling space. The Evanston community, including our residents, businesses, schools, nonprofits, faith-based organizations, and all members of our community, continue to work on actions that are helping to reduce the community-wide emissions. And as I have here on the slide, the total reduction of emissions at the community-wide level is 18,593, which is an equivalent of over 3,000 passenger vehicles being removed from the road. Implementation of the Climate Action Plan has been impossible through the support of the Evanston City Council and many, many local partners. First and foremost, where applicable and reasonable, projects have been completed using volunteer efforts, and the city tremendously appreciates all the efforts from our citizen boards, to volunteer days on Saturdays, to different ideas that get emailed to various staff members, so this work could not be done without them. In addition, funding from state, federal, and local sources, such as the Department of Energy at the federal level, and the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, and as I have here on the slide, with these two funding sources alone, the city's been able to leverage nearly $850,000 for money specifically designed for energy efficiency and sustainable projects. And many of those lighting and facility projects are directly resulting in the reductions that have been seen today. In addition, all city departments continue to look for grant funding and other creative ways to help get projects complete. In March, the City of Evanston was awarded a grant from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning to help complete a water conservation plan, so that will be something that will be upcoming. In addition, grants have been applied for with the US Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Energy to help further environmental education and electric vehicle deployment, and these are all with collaborative partners. In addition, staff will continue to look for additional energy efficiency projects that have a very short payback, so that the money and ways to help get projects complete. In March, the City of Evanston was awarded a grant from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning to help complete a water conservation plan, so that will be something that will be upcoming. In addition, grants have been applied for with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Energy to help further environmental education and electric vehicle deployment, and these are all with collaborative partners. In addition, staff will continue to look for additional energy efficiency projects that have a very short payback, so that the money and effort we spend can be seen in energy and in cost savings for many years to come. So, the last few slides, I just wanted to briefly talk about some of the next opportunities for implementing the Evanston Climate Action Plan. As I stated previously, approximately 115 of the 220 strategies have been worked on to date, so there's still many strategies to go, and many are still in the quick win and relatively easy to implement category, as well as some more additional long-range plans. Based on the assessment of the city's carbon emissions, the community energy and transportation are the main two areas in which we, as a community, can help to reduce the emissions of the city. Under the area of energy efficiency, the goal really is to reduce electricity and natural gas emissions with both energy efficiency and conservation. Efficiency being using a device or a piece of equipment that uses less energy, but you get the same value, whereas conservation is actually using less energy by turning off the lights, unplugging the coffee maker when you're done, et cetera. And then in the area of transportation, work to help the community to increase our active transportation, as well as participation in public transportation availability, and with the end goal of driving less miles, which is the direct result of emissions. So in the area of energy, the good news is that there are some great tools available that are free and existing that the City of Evanston can participate in. One of those first ones is the Citizens Utility Board, CubEnergySaver.com website. Hopefully, many people have already participated and signed up for that. To date, Evanston residents have saved over $100,000, excuse me, $100,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity and $11,000 in savings in people's individual pocketbooks. The City of Evanston won a pilot contest with Citizens Utility Board in the fall, with 330 people signing up. And now the city is working with Cub on a new contest, in which already over 900 people since March have signed up, which is great. This new Big Seven Savers Challenge is a competition among the city's seven largest employers to see who can get the largest team and who can save the most energy. The Big Seven employers include the Evanston Skokie School District 65, Evanston Township High School 202, the City of Evanston, St. Francis Hospital, Rotary International, Northwestern University, and North Shore University Health System. This contest is already off to a great start, and the city and our Big Seven employers will be working all year to continue to sign up additional people. Efforts will also be spent the rest of the year to continue to focus on energy savings in the commercial, industrial, institutional categories, additionally putting more information on the website, as well as additional outreach. And then finally, really working to connect people to the technical information and the funding options, so that people who are interested and ready to do projects can do so. And then finally, in the area of transportation, there's still many things in terms of implementing the climate action plan that can focus on active transportation, public transportation, as well as just overall driving cars less. And some of the areas of focus listed on the slide, including working with the Evanston Skokie School District 65 and the high school on safe routes to school, making it easier for children to get to school without needing a ride, as well as carpooling. The Environment Board, the Public Works Department in downtown Evanston are currently looking at some ways to enhance bicycle parking in the downtown business district, which is great, looking more for that. And then the second thing on transportation is the electric vehicle implementation, which I made a slide about that. One emerging area in transportation to help reduce our emissions can be related to electric vehicle implementation. This spring, we were gracious enough to have some students from Northwestern University participate in a research project as part of a senior project. They acted as consultants for a project in collaboration with myself and the parking department. And they conducted research to see what the feasibility would be to install electric vehicle charging stations in the city's Maple Street Parking Garage, not only as a way to help encourage people to buy electric vehicles by knowing that there's charging stations, as well as getting people to want to park in the parking garage and come to Evanston to shop while they charge. It was a great project. This image is the poster, what they produced, the final version. It's going to be put up on the website. It's in my office in life-size version right now. And the students calculated that in Illinois, converting a gasoline vehicle to an electric vehicle can reduce emissions by approximately 23% for each vehicle. So this is something that the city is interested in researching more and understanding how this might be something that could be part of our implementation of the climate action A few other projects that are noteworthy, that are being worked on, obviously in the area of offsetting energy usage with renewable energy, we're going to hear in a few moments about the report of the Mayor's Offshore Wind Committee and their findings. But in addition, as was mentioned in the video and previously, as part of our big federal stimulus energy efficiency project, the Water Department did put a 25-kilowatt solar PV system on the roof of the treatment plant, which is operational and helping to offset the energy over at that facility, so that's great. In the area of water conservation, working with the Grant for CMAP, staff this fall and into the winter will develop a water conservation and efficiency plan, and not only looking at Evanston residents, but also a regional approach for anyone that we currently sell water to, or that we might sell water to in the future. In the area of food cycle and of local food production, the City of Evanston is participating in a pilot project called the Green Garden Connections. It's really going to be an intergenerational project with partnering with Family Focus, the Cook County Commissioner's Office, our Omnivism Services, where we're going to be putting container gardening at each of the four city public housing senior facilities, and also getting volunteers from the community to come and help those seniors to participate in their own gardening project. And then finally, in the waste reduction area, like I said, 12% up from our recycling numbers, which is great. And there's going to be an event on July 23rd that Public Works is hosting, and one of the components, we're currently looking into repurposing some of our garbage containers to make them into composters. So that way, not only are we reusing those containers, but we're helping people to properly compost in a container that's been prefabricated. So in summary, I want to thank all the directors, all the departments, City Council, all the folks that gave input to help put this presentation together, as well as to help identify how many of the 220 strategies the city has been working on. And really, the main theme is that every individual action can have a reduction in our carbon footprint, whether that be on the way to work, whether that be at work on the weekends, going to visit friends and family. So I picked just a few simple things that anyone can do, and try to put the relative carbon reduction. So, we all have heard about CFL lighting and how they can be good, but they also have approximately 1,400 pounds of carbon reduction annually from putting those in. So whether you have time to do a programmable thermostat or properly inflate your tires, there's dozens and dozens of things that we can all do, as well as implementing additional items in the Evanston Climate Action Plan. But that'll take any questions, if there are any.
Thank you very much. All right, are these... Last time, the lights weren't working.
They're not.
I see no lights.
Yeah.
And they're not working again. Judy Alderman-Fisk, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kathryn, thank you very much for your presentation. Could you explain a little bit more about the composting program?
Sure. Well, Suzette Robinson might be the best person to give you details, but there have been several suggestions from residents and ideas that have been suggested by staff, that there are currently people in the city composting, and that having a proper container can really help to have good, successful composting, and that there are currently carts coming back, from garbage carts that are no longer suited for garbage collection, but would be perfect for containing compost. And so the idea right now is that the Public Works staff is looking at how we might be able to retrofit those for use as composters, and that's what we're researching this week. I'm going to put together some test cases, going to invite some members of the community, such as the folks from the Talking Farm, that are good at this sort of thing, and see what the conclusion is about whether we could be giving them to people in the community, along with a manual about how to do proper composting, which we've also been rotting around. There have been many discussions at the Environment Board about composting, and the general consensus was a proactive, educational-based option is something that they recommend staff consider, and so that's kind of where we are right now.
But for right now, so I understand, composting would be done on an individual basis, and the product of the composter would be used in the individual home or property?
Yes.
That our waste hauler does not accept compost, is that correct? So it must be... Suzette, are you here?
No.
I mean, once you take the yard waste and put it into a container and are in the process of composting, that then is the property of the person.
But compost also includes all sorts of other things, all sorts of...
You're talking about food scraps?
Yeah, food scraps and...
Right.
Other things.
Yes, you're correct. The intention would be for individual residences on their own properties to be having a small amount in the container that's provided to them that's been properly retrofitted, enhanced, provide good composting.
Okay. And the point I wanted to make is that this is just for use in the individual home, not... Suzette, is that correct, that grout does not take composted material?
Suzette Robinson, Director of Public Works. They actually will take it in your yard waste bin, so if you choose to dispose of it, you can dispose of it in the yard waste, and it will still just go in with the rest of the yard waste, which gets turned into compost anyway by contract. So if you don't want to use it in your own yard, and you just want to create it, and you know, as a means of condensing the amount of yard waste that you have, you can't dispose of it.
Okay, so we're talking food scraps, dog poop?
Oh, no, 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 no.
I'm just saying, this is what people compost. I just want to be clear about what's...
Oh, no, 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 no.
We're not talking just about yard waste. We're talking about...
No, no, no.
Other items that people compost, which is good.
And so, yes, that is... You are correct. That type of composting that has food scraps, organic, and it is not acceptable for grout to collect.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, maybe just to be clear, I know that the community has had other, larger discussions about composting. This is only what is allowed under Illinois state law. So the composting that we will be helping residents will be in compliance with Illinois state law. Again, there have been discussions, my understanding, of larger composting issues in the community. This is not meant to further or not further those discussions, but really to help our residents who wish to do it in compliance with Illinois state law.
All right, these lights are not working, so raise hands, shout out. Alderman-Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Hurley, for your report. We are maybe halfway through accomplishing the 200-some strategies in the climate action plan. Am I right? Something like that? Have we already picked the low-hanging fruit? Are those items that remain, those that require significant investment or cultural change?
I believe that...
That there are other institutional kind of barriers to achieving those strategies?
There are definitely still some strategies that are in the low hanging, or really just staff time and/or community collaboration time, a lot of education outreach items that just require... Putting that on the list, such as having workshops about how to weatherize your home, doing additional outreach on transportation, safety, and encouraging people to be bike-riding. There's a lot of things in the plan that unless we'd actually had a formalized program or a community group had said that they completed it, I didn't check that off as one. So there are still many things that can be done that are low investment.
Anyone else on the council? All right, I'll take one. Alderman-Burrus.
We talked about buying local. Are you working with our health department on the farmer's market concerns?
Have not yet, but could put it on the list.
That would be great. And then the second is talking about walkability, and probably maybe working with the director behind you, more crosswalks. I think it's helped a lot in our community. I've heard a lot of positive feedback about the crosswalks. People feel more comfortable out walking when they feel like they can get across larger streets. Thanks.
Thank you. Any more questions from the council? All right, one from the...
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to point out that there is a pioneering private entity in Evanston that's doing private pickup and composting. And her name is Earlene, and she calls herself the Compost Queen. She is licensed and does deliver her stuff to a registered...
And I actually partake in that, so I'm one of the people doing it.
Thank you. I did not know about Earlene, the composting queen. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Kathryn. You've done a splendid job, and you were a big part of our winning the award.
Next, Madam Mayor, we'll stay on our sustainability topic. As you know, council is where the mayor appointed a citizen committee to look at proposals that were submitted regarding a potential wind farm in Lake Michigan. Kathryn Hurley, our Sustainability Coordinator, was staff to that group. Perhaps Kathryn could just give a brief overview of the work, sort of the format and schedule of what transpired, and then I know that the committee chairs are here to give the more formal report.
Madam Chair, Chairman, Chairwoman, City Manager, members of City Council, Kathryn Hurley, Sustainable Programs Coordinator. It's been about 90 days since the mayor got the Wind Farm Committee appointed and off and running. The committee had four meetings during the 90-day period in which they reviewed the two respondents to the Wind Farm RFI in a very detailed manner, and was mentioned previously all the meeting minutes. And draft summary reports from some smaller working groups are all available on the city's website, so if anyone is interested in reading that in detail, they're all there. We have the co-chairs here tonight to give a brief presentation summarizing the members of the committee, the work completed to date, as well as their summary document, and as attachment to the summary document are many other documents, which are also all available online. And I know there's also other members of the Mayor's Wind Farm Committee that are here this evening that could be available to answer questions and to show their support. So thank you all for coming, and I'll introduce the co-chairs to come up.
Hi, I'm Bill Stegfried, one co-chair, and this is Nikolai Shesbu, my co-chair. And we've prepared a little presentation here. Kathryn pretty much stole the thunder on the first slide here. As many of you are aware, there was a lot of history with Citizens for Greener Evanston and the Climate Action Plan, which resulted in the issue of a request for information last May, a year ago. The responses were received two months later. There was some concern about what to do with those responses, but in December, the council voted to create a committee for the purpose of reviewing and evaluating the responses and providing comments within 90 days. There were the two of us appointed as co-chairs, and there were 19 others that were appointed to the committee with Kathryn as the staff support. The members were appointed on March 15th, and the full committee, as Kathryn said, met four times, plus there were multiple sessions for the four working groups. This is the 21-member committee. Don't know what more I can say about that, except that this was a diverse committee, both in terms of viewpoints and in terms of capabilities. I was astounded by how much talent, how much knowledge there was in this committee. There was no question that came up in any meeting that we couldn't find somebody on the committee that was an expert on it. Everything from people who were wind farm developers to people who... You know, one fellow is a member of the engineering team at ComEd that actually puts the lines under the streets. We had, like I say, all kinds of background as far as the avian studies, the geology. I was just astounded. As far as viewpoints, we had more people in favor than opposed, but we had both represented, and I'm neutral. I like the idea of the wind farm, but I see the negatives as well. Plus, my wife tells me every time I leave for a meeting, "No wind farm in my lake." The purpose of the RFI, this was a preliminary, less formal document than an RFQ or an RFP, and the reason for it typically is when the people leading the charge on a project don't have enough information to prepare an RFP, which was the case here. And the stated purpose of this RFI was to identify potential partners, to determine the city's role, and to establish a process. Those were all seriously needed, and to a certain extent, that purpose was fulfilled. There is still room for improvement. The responses that were received to the RFI, there was some disappointment, because many wind farm developers declined to provide information. In hindsight, it's clear that since it is... In hindsight, it's clear that since it isn't a real project yet, we're just thinking about it, that developers wouldn't be interested in putting forth the money or revealing their, their trade secrets at this point. But two local startup firms did respond. Mercury Wind Energy and Off-Grid Technologies were the two responses we got. Both respondents provided a lot of really good information at no charge within the very short time that was allowed, all at their own expense. So the, the committee wishes to express its gratitude for these respondents for putting in the effort, for spending the money to, to help the city in this discernment process. And these are the covers of the two responses that we received, the one from, from Mercury Wind Energy on the left, and the one from Off-Grid Technology on the right. In general, the responses varied in detail, and they varied in content. They did provide at least partial useful information on most of the aspects of the concept. In some instances, the working groups, we divided up into working groups to take on certain issues. We actually found eight issues that we assigned to four working groups to cover. In some instances, the working groups questioned or sought to supplement the information that was in the responses. But the, the report was strengthened by consideration of the diverse viewpoints that our committee members had. The committee work revealed varying opinions on some aspects, as you heard earlier this evening, and not every participant embraces every statement, as you heard earlier this evening. The efforts were made to report the strong majority sentiment. And, and again, the, the charge of the committee was not to choose a winner, the charge of the committee was not to decide what to do, the charge of the committee was not to determine whether this was a good thing or a bad thing. The charge of the committee was to review the responses that we got from the two firms and to make issues clear to the city council. A little background on equipment, and let's see, where do you start? MWE suggested that the wind farm be seven to nine miles offshore. They also suggested that the minimum economic size would be 100 megawatts, which was significantly more than Citizens for Greener Evanston had been considering earlier. Off-Grid Technologies suggests a 200-megawatt plant using an innovative vertical-axis magnetic levitation turbine. This is a device that is still on the drawing board with them. And the committee had a lot of discussion about the fact that this technology is not yet commercial, and it faces all the hurdles that any innovative technology does. The committee believes that the size that both respondents were talking about affects the potential role of the city. Evanston has insufficient demand to use all that power, so it's clear that that power would be going well beyond Evanston. And of course, if you also look in at the normal energy diversity that you need on the grid, you can't have 100% wind power, so it actually is multiplied in how large an area that wind farm would serve. The likely grid interconnection, there happened to be a couple of committee members who are also on the, the Evanston Utility Commission, and when we heard about the wind farm prospect, we happened to be on a tour of the nearest substation, the COMED substation on Emerson Street just west of Green Bay. We were, we toured that facility, and, and we asked the COMED people whether they could accept 100 or 200 megawatts there, and they said, "No, not at all. That was a very inappropriate place to, to put it, because that's a distribution substation and not a transmission substation." They pointed out that the best place would be the Skokie Substation, which is on Church Street, just near the Edens. So that brings up another perspective on how this thing works. The underground cable route would involve both Evanston and Skokie, something that hadn't been thought of before. As far as the overall timeline, there wasn't a whole lot said about that in the responses, but the committee believes that the project schedule, including studies permitting, financing, procurement, and construction, will take significantly longer than what was expressed by the respondents. We recognize that there is, there are a number of steps needed here, the first being a state framework in which to, to permit, and then the permitting process, which is always a long process, and then the project planning and engineering and manufacturing, and finally the construction. Given those constraints, the committee believes that a commercial-scale project, if it's the first one in Lake Michigan, would require a minimum of four years. Even that's probably very optimistic. There are some on the committee who felt it would be as long as 10 years before you'd see this. So there, there was a lot of, of discussion about, you know, we're not talking about this thing happening in the next couple of years, and if you're not talking about it in the next couple of years, it changes perspectives a great deal on what's feasible, what's possible, what's financially possible. So that's something that needs to be borne in mind, that this is a long-term process that we're talking about here. Just for a little relief here, this is the kind of work ship we're talking about out there in the lake. The, the ship actually goes out there and then puts down temporary pilings to support the ship while it raises the, the turbines. So we're not talking about a small undertaking here. This goes to Carl Bova's comments about how expensive it is to do work on the lake. It's a real issue and something we really need to, to keep in mind. It's not as cheap as building out in the cornfields. Oh, and by the way, that ship is, is not going to make port of Evanston. Energy pricing implications. This is a real interesting issue, because the, the respondents were a little confused on this. The key questions that everybody wants to ask are, what is the electricity going to cost, and who's going to buy it? And it was not well addressed in the responses. There were implications in there that would be purchased directly by ratepayers in Evanston, which is not the case. There were references in there about how the, the city might become an aggregator, which is something that has been considered in the past and, and is not very desirable. There, there are a whole lot of notions there. Basically, how power is bought and sold is, when you have a project this size, the necessity is for a power purchase agreement. A power purchase agreement is a contract between the power producer and the wholesale buyers, covering the amount of power to be sold and the price. MWE provided some useful information on this. OGT provided example provisions, but they only briefly mentioned potential buyers. And typically, the potential buyers around here are brokers who are buying and selling electricity. Ultimately, they would sell it to the, the ultimate user. And around here, there's a lot of confusion about who you actually do buy your electricity from. It's not Commonwealth Edison. Commonwealth Edison handles the billing for the default provider of power, which is the state auction. So the state auction might buy some of this green power and then sell it to COMED for just, not sell it to COMED, but, but provide it for COMED to distribute it to you. So the direct link there doesn't exist. It's something we need to bear in mind, and some of the commentators mentioned, that, that this electricity is not going to be designated to or, or dedicated to the ratepayers of Evanston. It's just not part of the deal. Further implications, the committee found that the retail price of power in Evanston is currently not determined by any single power generating facility. Again, when you've got these brokering deals and auction deals, the, the cost of electricity in Evanston tends to be an amalgam of those different sources of electricity, and so a wind farm likely would not affect the retail price in Evanston, unless the community chooses to designate that we're getting green power and we're going to, willing to pay extra for it. The cost of electricity is in flux. This is another interesting aspect that goes back to the duration of the project. This project will last long enough that Midwest generation will be closing their coal-fired plants before we can get this wind farm on. When we close their coal-fired plants, the cost of electricity is going to go up. And therefore, while the cost of, of power from a wind farm is not competitive today, it'll be more nearly competitive by the time this wind farm gets online. So a lot of external events that are going to affect the competitiveness of this wind farm. The likely cost scenarios, including demand for renewable energy credits, really need more study. We need to, to do a little better look for ourselves to see whether we think this is going to be feasible here. There's an example of a, a wind farm array. I believe this is in the North Sea. From certain angles, they're very pretty. And again, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. We took a, a trip down to a wind farm in Indiana, and those who have a strong green inclination think it's just the most beautiful thing there is, and other people don't. So that's, and that's one thing, the, the route instructions for the trip we took down to those, to the wind farms in Indiana are available. I have them, Catherine has them. If you'd like to go take your own, I know a lot of people couldn't make the trip that we did, and it turns out, it's really interesting. We went on a foggy rainy day, which made a very different perspective than when I laid the trip out on a clear sunny day. You can really see a lot for a long way on the clear sunny day, and you can't see very much for very far on the misty day. And we have exactly those kind of conditions on the lake, so it really is helpful if you go twice. It's a very different thing. But again, it's a very personal thing as to whether it's beautiful or ugly. Now I'm going to hand it over to Nikolai to talk about the involvement of government.
Just among the things that we discussed and, and found in our, our discussions, first of all, it's clear that federal policy, including financial support, strongly favors offshore wind development. And this is part of the Department of Energy's program. This is not something that's happening in a vacuum. The approval for the first U.S. offshore project is now complete. I know a lot of effort was made by the Department of Energy to streamline the approval procedures for wind farms on, on the Atlantic coast. Obviously, it's more complex in the Great Lakes because of state involvement. The policy documents on offshore wind power push a critical role of state and local leadership. The states and, and localities that, that make the effort are going to be the ones that'll, that'll first see, see something happen. The state of Illinois has a renewable energy portfolio standard which aids wind project development in general right now. In addition, as already noted, the state owns the lake bed, and has started a legislative process for creating a framework to lease lake bed and regulate offshore wind. The bill has passed both houses, and I think it's awaiting the governor's signature at this time. The city of Evanston has multiple role opportunities to consider at this time. First of all, it's, it's, the, the residents of the city and our state representative are, are, serve as a catalyst to push the state to consider offshore wind development. Several committee members wanted to point out that, that, wanted me to point out that some wind farm in the lake is, is likely. If Evanston takes no active role, opportunity to influence any project is lost. It is true that there is very little inherent authority that Evanston has. At this point, it would, it would be something like permitting cable easement, but in the process of establishing the rules that the state council will undertake, there might be many other opportunities for localities and counties affected to participate and, and comment. So one of the points that was, was raised again by, by many committee members was the need for, for the city to foster education and transparent discussion and to assess public opinion. Concern that's, that was, were raised was that it's clearly easy to identify the people that are for, and clearly easy to identify the people that are against, and the vast majority of people that might be asking, "What is a wind farm?", still have to be reached and, and, and surveyed. Taking this active role is consistent with the city's Climate Action Plan as, as accepted by the city back in November of 2008. So we wanted to talk a little bit about what we thought were, were feasible next steps. One thing is certainly to encourage, facilitate, and follow the state's activities, and we would recommend that, that the city of Evanston representative be a local government official in the Executive Lake of Michigan Offshore Wind Energy Advisory Council. There is a position that's reserved for a local government official. We hope that person is from, from Evanston. Several members also were concerned about that we acted in harmony with the residents, we don't get ahead of the residents in, in, in this project. And so that's what made it so important to promote awareness and foster transparent discussions. And perhaps this is a, a reason why the city should consider having town hall meetings as significant milestones that reach to ensure that as many people as possible are drawn into this process and have an opportunity to comment. Certainly, it's, it's vital to, to encourage and facilitate a meteorological station or buoy. This is essential for project feasibility, and it's worthwhile to collaborate with, to look at collaborating with other interested parties, such as Northwestern University, to minimize or eliminate direct expenses to the city. I could offer two examples. The Michigan Alternative and Renewable Energy Center, in cooperation or collaboration with the University of Michigan Energy Institute, and the city of Muskegon, and Wisconsin Utility, and also participation support from, from the Sierra Club, has obtained almost $3 million in grants to order and, and receive a buoy that will be deployed in Lake Michigan, just off of the west coast of Michigan, to assess both wind speeds and assess avian impact. And then these results will be, be processed and assessed by, by both the University of Michigan and the Michigan State Extension. Also, we, we, we thought that it would be important, we didn't really have time to get into it at length, but to, to, to identify the pros and cons of an offshore wind farm in, in detail, the environmental, social, and financial impacts on the city and the residents, and on its commitment to the Climate Action Plan on, on university and, and local businesses. Also, to encourage, facilitate, and follow key feasibility studies. Avian impact is, is, is one. There will be several other environmental studies that'll be necessary before this can go anywhere. I think it's important also to stress that people have to remember that there are a great number of, of both federal and state agencies that are prepared to tee off on a project like this, and, and vet it very carefully for, for, for environmental impact. This is not something that can possibly happen in a vacuum. Also was, was recommended that we identify grants and tax benefits and other available sources, so we demonstrate favorable conditions to developers and lenders if it is determined that the city is interested in pursuing this. Also, it's worthwhile following initiatives such in Ohio. What they did there is, people, some people have made the comment that, that the city would have, would have no involvement and no financial benefit from, from, from this. As an example, in Ohio, what's happened is, is that they've agreed on a lease fee for the exploratory phase of an offshore wind farm off, off of Cleveland, and the money is split between the state and localities. And the counties and the city got together and negotiated an agreement on how that money would be split. So it's not inconceivable that the city would have, would have some involvement. Actively explore and select the city's role. This is, these are questions that we don't have an answer to, but it might be something that the, the city would, would want to explore and, and consider. If it wants to consider itself as a potential direct buyer, an RFP, involvement with an RFP would only be necessary if the city chooses a role as owner, producer, or buyer of the electricity. Another item that would have to be, be looked at would be identifying master planning concepts or imminent projects that may impact or be impacted by the wind farm. As we discussed earlier, it'd be necessary to, to move the, the power via underground cable from offshore on to, through the city of Evanston and Skokie to the substation at, at Church and Edens. Also, we think that it's, it's important to promptly designate a, a committee to work on these steps, especially the critical role of, of aspect of role determination. And we would ask that the city and, and the council consider establishing a committee for, with more than a 90-day time horizon, so that they could provide more detail and, and more complete answers for your consideration. And again, eleven is to explore potential partners to minimize and eliminate direct expenses by the city. So that would mean collaborating with local governments, institutions, and other entities that may share costs or aggregate, aggregate roles. This would be, for example, if, if, if we, if we aggregated the ratepayers here in Evanston, we might want to also cooperate with other municipalities to aggregate their ratepayers to help create a buying- a buying co-op that'd be large enough to have an impact. That mayor may not be something we'd want to do, but that's something that needs to be considered. But first of all, we want to thank the city for its interest in the concept, and thank you for the opportunity for citizen input.
Thank you all very much. I know, there seems to be one unanimous opinion of everybody who's met with and worked with your committee, and that is that you're an outstanding committee, and thank you. All right. Does anyone have any questions?
Do the members of the committee who are here stand?
Yes. Would all the members of the committee who are here stand? Please stand. Does anyone on the council have any questions? All right. Thank you all very much. You can ask in the hall.
I'm curious, was there any mention of the geology of the lake bottom?
This is certainly something that will come up. For example, in Ohio right now, what they're doing is they're planning to do test borings at each site where a turbine will go, because they fully realize they have to get full knowledge of that before they can successfully plan, design, and build a foundation for the turbine.
Soil borings are a normal procedure for the building of any structure on land or sea.
This is different because if you make a lot of perforations like sheet stamps, it's holding in the lake water, it's 20% of red water.
Well, I'm not a civil engineer, but that hasn't been a problem on projects that I have directed.
In the lake?
It doesn't matter whether it's onshore or offshore.
The task of the city council this evening is to accept the report, and if we wish to at this point, provide direction for next steps, or we can wait and do that at a later time. What is your pleasure? Does anyone feel prepared to provide direction for next steps? Sorry, Alderman Wilson?
Do we want to devote the time to that? I have my thoughts on next steps, but I'm not sure we've allocated time for the full-blown discussion tonight.
Well, it's already nine o'clock, and we have three more.
Right. So, I guess what I'll do is defer on my thoughts and suggest that we add this to an agenda in the very near future so we can have a full discussion on it.
Okay. Alderman Holmes?
I was going to say, don't we accept the report?
We should accept.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I think we should accept the report. Correct.
So, if you move that, I'll second it.
Move that we accept the report and defer the discussion to a date in the very near future.
I will second that.
All right. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to suggest that we defer the report until the, whatever the state's committee, what is the name of that committee that's going to report to the legislature? Somebody out there knows what the name of the committee is.
Lake Michigan Offshore Advisory Council.
I'm sorry?
Lake Michigan Offshore Advisory Council.
Okay. Lake Michigan Offshore Advisory Council issues its report, and I think, is that expected in November?
They have up to a year to report.
Okay.
Is there any reason not to accept the report now?
No, no, no. To accept the report, but to...
And defer next steps. Defer the discussion until after that committee has made its report to the state legislature.
I would not want to amend my motion. I think we should address it at the earliest opportunity.
Alderman Tendem?
Is there any urgency to the idea of having a representative on this committee? If, in fact, it is the same committee that we're talking about?
Yes, there is urgency.
In that, can we at least pursue that point? I mean, it doesn't involve a discussion now, but at least as an agenda item, discover or try to find out what the urgency is of that position, or recommendation at least.
Well, I think that was reserved for an Evanston person, and it would be very wise for us to take it. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I have a different take on this. I think what we ought to do is refer this, I think we should accept the report, of course, with great appreciation for all those who presented it and who worked on it. But to go to the Rules Committee and form a very special subcommittee of members of the city council who feel qualified to work and review the presentation made by the committee and make a recommendation in that way to the city council. That's what I think we should do. I think there are members of the council who are eminently qualified to analyze this and to make a recommendation to those of us who do not feel eminently qualified as to the next steps. But to accept the report, to, and then go to this, to the Rules Committee and discuss this.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is, the one recommendation that may have some urgency, as we suggested, is getting representative from Evanston on the Lake Michigan Offshore Wind Energy Council. And your understanding is that is an Evanston seat on that council?
Well, no, but certainly our state representative will work hard to have an Evanston person on there.
So, could we, do we need an act of this body to specifically request or support the idea of an Evanston representative on that?
I think that would probably help to, we have Alderman Wilson's motion, which has been moved and seconded. So, I think we can do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So, then, do you want to vote on, well, we don't have a motion yet.
I think that's where, I mean, if we're going to, I'm not sure. Are we going to make the recommendation for the Evanstonian to be on this committee, or what?
My plan is to ask our state representative of what we should do.
Make a referral, a recommendation. Okay. All right.
And then, I think we should do, we should follow her advice on this.
Well, I hope she follows our advice.
Well, if she asks for our advice, let's hope she follows.
I think the Rules Committee is exactly the place where the details of this should be worked out, but, you know, certainly not here and not a month.
Not here and not now. All right. Well, we have Alderman Wilson's motion to do this as quickly as possible and not tonight.
To accept the report.
Well, we've done that. We've accepted the report. Accept the report, and I move that we refer the report to the Rules Committee. And my preference would be that the Rules Committee form a subcommittee to make a recommendation regarding next steps, which has nothing to do with getting a member on the special committee from Evanston.
I guess that was my question, is do we need to come to an agreement as to whether we're going to ask our representative to put an Evanston person on the council?
Of course.
Yes. City manager?
I checked with staff. The bill has not been signed by the governor yet. It's still under his consideration. So, there is no committee just yet. If the council wishes to have a letter transmitted to the governor urging that he sign the bill, we have been in support of the bill, working with our state representatives. Obviously, Representative Gable is the sponsor of the bill, but there is no committee just yet.
Well, the mayor, we had originally talked with Representative Gable about having more than one government representative. I know the mayor of Waukegan is very interested in a wind farm, as is the mayor of North Chicago. So, there will be competition to get, if it's down to one position. I had hoped, and we had talked about it being three, so if it's down to one, there will be competition for, over it. And I think it would probably be a good idea to have our nominee, whoever they may be, ready to go as quickly as possible.
And not wait for the meeting of a subcommittee of the Rules Committee meeting in two weeks?
Yeah, I think, well, in two weeks, if we can get this done in two weeks, though. But if we meet in two weeks to appoint a subcommittee, that takes a longer time. Yes. Alderman Wilson?
I don't see any need to appoint a subcommittee. I don't know that any of us are going to be any more qualified. In fact, I would be amazed if any of us were more qualified than the committee that's already made the recommendations. So, I feel like we have all the information that we're going to need to make a decision. And I don't know that we need a subcommittee to further evaluate that.
Alderman Rainey? I would just ask, what are the next steps? And we would, and that is the reason why I think we need a subcommittee to... Ann, is your mic on?
That's the reason I feel we need a subcommittee to take us to the next step. What recommendation do we make as going forward?
Okay. Did you make a motion, Alderman?
I thought I did before.
All right. Was it seconded?
The subcommittee has nothing to do with appointing or supporting the presence of an Evanstonian on the committee.
Okay. Alderman Grover?
Except to the extent that what our wind farm committee recommended as next steps is to ensure that Evanston is represented on that wind energy council.
But there's no council yet. The law hasn't been passed, so there's, we're appointing something to somebody that doesn't exist. Right.
Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, I could, I could support going to the Rules Committee with this, but not the subcommittee. I think this is something that we all have to decide as a council.
Alderman Wilson?
And I just think it should go to the council in the ordinary session. I think that's more appropriate for the community at large to participate in the discussion.
All right. Alderman Rainey made a motion. Is there a second?
I withdraw it. There doesn't seem to be any interest.
All right. Then, we're going to put this on the agenda for a city council meeting as soon as possible.
And, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we would anticipate doing that at your first meeting in July, which would be July 11.
All right. We have a date.
And just for the record, Madam Mayor, I'm looking at a copy of the bill. The way the final, the final composition of the group would be, is it would be two residents of the state representing lakefront communities. So, I think at one point, there was a Cook County resident and a Lake County resident, and the way it was finally done was two residents representing.
So, we're at two. All right. That's fine, because we're the Cook County group that's interested. All right. Do you want to settle whether or not to recommend someone tonight, or? Okay. We're done. All right. City manager. I think that takes care of the wind farm report.
Yes. Our next presentation, we have been one quarter through the 3-1-1 process. Joe McCray and Sue Pontorelli are here and are going to walk through a report on the 3-1-1 system. We've been providing the council and community regular reports on this. So, I'm going to ask Joe perhaps to quickly go through the data, much of which has already been previously distributed, and focus instead on the requests and kind of the things that we've learned thus far in the process. With that, Mr. McCray, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, city clerk, city manager. My name is Joe McCray. I'm the assistant to the city manager. As the city manager has said, myself and Sue Pontorelli are here to talk to you about the 3-1-1 quarterly report. We will do our best to focus on several of the stats and get you the information you need. If at any point in time you have questions, please feel free to ask. And if there is information that you would like to see that we don't have present here tonight, please feel free to let us know, and we'll get that information to you. We had a successful launch. As many of you know, 3-1-1 was a year-long project for us that went live on March 1st. March 1st, 2011 was the goal. We met that goal. Our first call was the Honorable Alderman Jane Grover, which was excellent. We had a press conference that followed with a brief tour that was provided to our media contacts that attended, and we were off. So, to go through some of the call volume stats, I'm going to call to the podium Sue Pontorelli, and then I'll be back to speak about the service request side of things.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city clerk, and city manager. As Joe said, I'm Sue Pontorelli, the supervisor of 3-1-1, as well as the police service desk. And I'm going to talk a little bit about our call volume, and I will go through this quickly. Again, as Joe said, if you have any questions, please let us know. In the first quarter so far, we've received over 31,000 phone calls. We've handled almost 29,000 of those, about 92%. About 2,600 of those are calls abandoned and, for various reasons, did not make it through to 3-1-1. Starting in March, what we did is we phased in phone numbers from the departments, and on April 1st, we took in public works, which brought in all the telephone numbers. And if we are continuing at this current trend of phone calls that we received, we will end the year with about 124,000 phone calls, which would be about 1.6 per resident. And here's a chart on our first, our phone calls. And the first quarter showed 7,800. In April, which is when all the phone numbers were in, we had over 10,000. And in May, we had 10,400. Couple of events in May, we had a half-day of phone outage from the phone provider, not anything at our end, and that was for about four hours. And also, we had the Memorial Day holiday in there as well. This is an average of our weekend and weekday combination. If you look, about 253 calls per day in March, 354 in April, and 337 in May. Our weekday volume is significantly higher. March was 327, 480 in April, and about 449 in May. When I left today around 6:00, we were almost at 600 phone calls. Our daily, our weekend volume is a little lower at this time. In March, we are averaging 40, April 58, and May 63. And we're going to continue to monitor the weekend call volume. Just a little about the stats. Our average daily combined weekend and weekday is about 315. Weekday, 419, and the average on a weekend is 54. Our busiest days are Mondays or any day after a holiday weekend, and then the water billing shut-off days are extremely busy as well. The slowest day so far has been on Sundays, and we're going to continue to monitor weekends over the summer with different festivals, special events, farmer's market, and watch the numbers on the weekends. And at this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Joe, and he'll go a little more in-depth about service requests.
Thank you, Sue. Just a quick caveat about the, about the weekends. It's 54 calls a day, average on the weekend. So, not the combined weekend, but I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear on my, on my part. In terms of service requests, we have 4,000, we have a total of 4,537 service requests. We saw a huge increase in service requests from our start time in March to April, about 111%. We're averaging about 49 service requests a day, and the majority of those service requests are public works. There are some of the data. As you can see, we had about 955 in March, 1532 in April, and then 2050 in May. So, an increase of about 500 service requests a month. From a daily standpoint, you can see that in March, we were averaging about 31 a day, and April 51 a day, and in May 66. So, again, that number doubled. When you look at the breakdown by department, it's clear that public works makes up the majority of our, of our service requests. Their services are in high demand, followed by the utilities department, community development, parks, and admin services. And with admin services, it's primarily focused on parking systems. Here's a breakdown by ward. As you all are aware... As you all are aware, the city council is aware, we send out a weekly report that gives a detail of what the service requests are in your ward. This is a breakdown of all the service requests which we have addresses for. So there is a small percentage of service requests that don't have an address. And so this does not represent all 4,500, but it represents a large majority of the ones that we have addresses for, that we can track by ward. And so, just so you know, the second ward is probably the highest, with 17%. The sixth ward comes in next at 14%, and then we have the ninth, seventh, and fifth ward at 12%. The ward with the lowest amount is the first ward. Just another note to the city council, we have made a training available for you all. If you're interested in learning about the backend of the 3-1-1 software system, so that you yourself can log in and take a look at in real-time what's coming in for your ward. We have had a couple Aldermen inquire about that. We've had Alderman Rainey take advantage of it. And it remains open to all, yes, and Alderman Fisk as well, and Alderman Holmes. So there's been more since the last time I checked, great. So if you are here and interested in that, you know, please let me know. We're happy to provide that information to anyone that's interested. Top five service requests for the first quarter. I'm going to read the list, and then I'm going to call individuals up to, the department directors up to speak about them in a little bit more detail. We have trash special pickup, trash miss pickup, broken parking meter, trash cart large, and then trash miss recycling pickup. And so I'm going to call upon Joellen Earl first to come up and speak about the broken parking meter piece. And then we'll have Suzette Robinson come next.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city manager and city clerk, Joellen Earl, Director of Administrative Services. I've actually gone through and looked at all of the broken meter service requests. I can't tell you exactly how many calls came in for a broken meter, because there may have been a call or there may have been a question about a parking meter that was answered. But since the beginning of March, there have been 213 service requests logged for broken parking meters. And 132 or 134 were generated by staff. So it's, I thought it was kind of interesting to see how we're handling the requests. Some residents are calling in, but also parking staff on the ground are calling in and logging the requests. People that work at the civic center are logging requests. Some are coming through administrative adjudication. I am pleased to say that for all of the requests that have been generated for broken parking meters, every single one of them, as almost every single request in administrative services, have been closed and completed within the agreed timeframe. And just to put it in context, too, 216 requests is out of 2,400 meters roughly. So it's about 9% of the meters. Some of them are doubles. I didn't go through that particular of an analysis, but roughly 9% of the meters have had servicing since March. And the main reason is for battery replacement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Ms. Earl. I have to ask, did we know before 3-1-1 that 9% of our meters had servicing issues?
I would have to ask staff. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Do we have a way of having, finding that information?
I'm sure they log them. They must have been logging them. And I can ask Mr. Voss tomorrow and get back to you on that.
I really don't need to. I just wondered, my question really gets at what 3-1-1 brings to us in the way of additional information about equipment that needs servicing and data that we might not have had before. So.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, certainly, I think the timing. And I think one of the good things about this is a meter that has a battery is a meter that can take a quarter. A meter that doesn't have a battery cannot take a quarter. And so if we're able to replace those batteries in a more expeditious fashion than either when the call might have gotten to us from any number of sources or when a parking operations official would have seen it, now only do we know how many we have that are broken, we can fix them quickly and have them generate revenue again. So that's a good sign. Ms. Robinson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council, city clerk, and city manager. I'm Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works. And it looks like four of the top five requests belong to Public Works and are all trash-related. Item number one is, it's actually a good request to have, and it's a good for that to be in the top spot. Those are requests for special pickups, which is the, is a revenue generator for the city. So those are residents that are calling in requesting bulk trash collections in addition to the trash that they may have. And as you know, we charge $25 for the first 10 cubic yards. And special pickups generate about $100,000 in revenue per year. So that's a good thing. As far as, to kind of anticipate Alderman Grover's question with regards to the special pickups, we were receiving those phone calls, but we also received a lot of complaints about residents that called in and requested special pickups and were given a reservation for a certain day. And then it didn't happen. And part of that was because a lot of our complaints previously or requests previously were on sticky notes on the, on a dry erase board or written down on notes or left on a voicemail for a supervisor. So they were all over the place. So 3-1-1 actually consolidates all that in one location so that we are able to capture everything and troubleshoot requests when residents submit them directly. Number two, missed trash pickup. And missed trash pickup, that number is, you know, relatively high for a variety of reasons. One, in November, we switched over to a contractor for refuse collection. So some of those missed trash collections will occur as a result of the setouts. And those setouts are like parkway pickups. So if everybody on the block has an alley collection, and then the house on the end may have a parkway pickup, and that parkway pickup is not in front of the house, sometimes it's on the side street. So it takes a while for drivers to kind of figure out where all the garbage carts are. And then, more importantly, if that assigned driver takes a vacation, then somebody else has to remember where those setouts are. So that's probably the more prevalent missed garbage. And that actually applies to miss recycling, too, in terms of the more, the reason for most of those missed pickups. But also, the missed pickups occurs, you know, from a residential perspective, because it doesn't say, "I didn't put my garbage out by 7:00." So understand that we've trained all of our residents that if you call and say your garbage is missed, we'll do everything that we can to come back and pick up the garbage the same day or the next day. So, and we don't ask, we don't care. When we were tracking things, we, our drivers would call in and say, "A certain address, their garbage wasn't out by 7:00." Because we had a few residents on every week didn't put their garbage out by 7:00. And every week, we went back and picked it up. And I've had to send letters to residents and say, "Look, you know, we're going to charge you a special pickup if we have to come, you know, continue to come back, you know, every week to pick up your garbage." So there are, so the onesie-twosie types missed, it may be people that didn't put their garbage out by 7:00 o'clock because they think they know when the garbage man is going to come. If he consistently comes at 10:00 o'clock every morning, then there's a new driver, and that driver drives the route differently. "I don't put my garbage out to 9:50 because he comes at 10:00." Well, the next driver comes at 7:00, guess what, your garbage is missed. So that is also a reason for the number of missed stops. Trash cart large, we should see that number go down way, 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 almost to zero once we get all the new garbage carts distributed. We have finished everything, and I misspoke at your ward meeting. We actually are, Tuesday was the last route. So I had thought Monday was the last route. Monday is actually complete. So Tuesday's collection is the route that we're currently working on, and we should have done by the first week of July. We'll be done with Tuesday's routes in terms of distribution. So what happens is, some of the people in advance, they'll see their neighbor across the alley and get a new cart. And if they don't get there that day, they'll send in a service request and say, "Well, my neighbor got a new cart. You know, why didn't I get a new cart?" So that is, and, I mean, you know, we all have seen the carts. They were in poor, dilapidated, horrible, horrible condition. So, like I said, they'll go down to smaller numbers where the squirrels, because these carts, there's no cart that's made that's squirrel-proof. So we've even had requests for new carts that need replacing, lids replaced, because the squirrels have eaten through them. And then the last item is miss recycling pickup. And that is, those functions are performed, that service is performed in-house by in-house crews. And the majority of miss recycling occurs from our in-house crews. It has, is mostly due to equipment issues. We have a set number of garbage trucks. And so, and if they're not, if we have two trucks go out of service, that really does impact our ability to complete our collections for the day. So what we've started doing is to give an information back to 3-1-1 to say, if we know we didn't finish a route for the day because of equipment issues, we'll send that information back and say, you know, "We didn't finish this section of Tuesday's route." And we'll give the, we'll give them the location information so that they can tell the residents when they call in, you know, "They didn't finish the route today." And that's what we would provide as a service when we were answering the phone directly, so that residents knew to expect the collection the next day because we didn't get finished. So that's it for the top five.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, I just want to speak a little bit about the lessons learned. And I'll go through this quickly in the interest of time. I think number one, first and foremost, is that residents appreciate quality customer service that's being provided through this new piece. By and large, we've gotten a lot of positive constructive feedback on this project. And I've just been very pleased. We've also gotten a, we've gotten some feedback that has not been positive, far less than what has been positive. And we've taken that to heart and tried to improve in those areas. And so we're listening to our residents. We're trying to make sure that we're providing quality customer service on every phone call, on every service request that comes in. And that's our goal. And so we continue to strive to accomplish that. I want to say that the police department was a perfect fit for this project. You know, we had a number of different options. We did this project in one year. A number of other communities take two years to do this. The city of Elgin right now is undertaking a similar project, two years to do this. I can't tell you how much of a key component this, the success of this project is. The success of this project is being the police department and the structure and the policies and the protocols that they have in place to provide customer service in an efficient manner. Being a good neighbor with the city of Chicago, of the four 3-1-1 centers in the state, Chicago and Evanston share a border. And so it's important for us to be knowledgeable about what they have going on. And when we're getting calls, making sure that they have the information, their callers have information to get to their 3-1-1 center, and making sure that when they get our calls, that they have the necessary information to provide our callers with our 3-1-1 center's information. And so we have to be good neighbors, and we continue to work on that relationship. Heavy call volume during the weekdays has shown us that we needed to modify our staffing schedule to accommodate for that. And so Monday through Fridays are much heavier days. As Sue said, Monday being the heaviest day, we've topped 600 on that day, calls on the day on that day. And so we've modified our schedule to accommodate that call volume. 3-1-1 versus 9-1-1. When we went into this project, there was some concern about 9-1-1 calls coming to 3-1-1. We really haven't seen that be much of a problem. There's not much confusion there. We've also tried to take a look at in this first quarter whether or not 3-1-1 has in any way impacted 9-1-1. And to be quite honest, which is too early to tell yet, but that's a trend that we'll continue to look at to see if there's an impact in terms of non-emergency calls coming to 3-1-1 as opposed to 9-1-1. And that this project is a work in progress. We're four months in, we're at 31,000 calls. We have a lot to learn. There's more to do. There's other projects that we want to do, which I'll talk about in a little bit. But all in all, I think we're making good progress. Opportunities for efficiency, some of which you've heard about already. You know, Groot, they handle our refuse collections. This system has allowed Public Works to be able to monitor their performance. Groot being our contractor, and be able to follow up with them on the areas where we've had some concerns, which is excellent. Scheduling building inspections, that's an area of high call volume for us. We're going to be working with community development, community economic development, to come up with a process to streamline that piece, to make those inspections, that scheduling the inspection process easier on the residents and using our 3-1-1 system to help with that. Broken parking meters, you've heard from Joellen. And I want to say about broken parking meters and abandoned autos, you know, broken parking meters, administrative services, abandoned autos, the police department, those staff members really went out of their way to incorporate 3-1-1 into their process, their workflow process. And so where they had a separate process set up and maybe separate data collection methods, they've really taken it upon themselves to integrate the 3-1-1 process into their workflow for more efficiencies. And then feedback collection. We've used 3-1-1 to collect feedback on various initiatives that we're doing. Engage Evanston was an avenue where people could use 3-1-1 to make suggestions. The Veolia transfer station and complaints or concerns about that. And also the yellow line, say what's going on right now. So we're able to take that information, put it in the system, report out the feedback that we're getting, and make sure that it gets to the appropriate staff member. Future development. So we're always looking to improve. We're always looking to do things better. One of the big things I want to talk about, just real briefly, is an Evanston 3-1-1 mobile app. We're looking to roll that out in the fall. If you have an iPhone, an Android phone, or a BlackBerry smartphone, in the fall, you would be able to go to your app store and, for free, download the Evanston 3-1-1 app, where you can make service requests from your cellphone. And I think that only adds to the accessibility and convenience of using 3-1-1 and keeps us cutting edge. Text messaging 3-1-1. The city of Chicago just rolled out their text messaging option for 3-1-1. And so in keeping up with our neighbor, we're going to look into that as well. The text message option applies to information inquiries primarily in Chicago. And so we're going to look at the feasibility of that for our 3-1-1 center in the months to come. And then also, we're just going to continue to spread the word. We want to have a presence at city events. We want to have a presence at the farmer's market. Some of our call-takers actually suggested that maybe having a presence at the farmer's market would be good, to have that face-to-face interaction. And they kind of want to get out in the community and meet some people and let the people, let our citizens know who's on the other end of the phones, so they understand who's providing that quality customer service. But different events and also ward meetings, of course. And then just one reminder for the viewing public, you know, Evanston 3-1-1, we're open seven days a week, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. For overnight, you can still call us. We have voicemail available. Or if you want to talk to a live person after our hours, the police front desk is available. And there's always 24-hour access via the city's website, where you can access our information, our frequently asked questions, and our service requests. All the same services that are available to you if you call. And with that, just wanted to say thank you, and I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? I think you explained it beautifully, Mr. McCray.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, one last comment. We discovered there's one cellphone service that still doesn't work in Evanston. And we just heard about it at the seventh ward meeting last week, and that is a company called Cricket. It's a pay-as-you-go cellphone service. A resident actually got up during the ward meeting, dialed 3-1-1, held his cellphone up for all to hear, and it was, "Thank you for calling the Chicago 3-1-1 Center." So, and this was, and this was pretty far into, this was at the Ecology Center. So it wasn't really even a matter of border issues, which we had initially with other cell carriers. So just to let people know, if you have a Cricket cellphone, we're trying to find where the Cricket folks are. And as soon as we do, we'll get them to work on their cell infrastructure so that we can direct the calls there.
I'm going to work very hard to find that Cricket supplier. And if there are other, you know...
If you hear any chirps, please let Joe know.
Right. If there are other entities that are not covered, please make that information available at 3-1-1 as well.
Alderman Grover, did you? Yes, I want to thank Ms. Pontorelli and Mr. McCray for all their work to keep refining and improving our 3-1-1 call service. And especially to Mr. McCray for his celebrity appearance at the ward meeting on Thursday, which ended up consuming a large portion of that meeting. So it highlighted, I think, to all of us that we need to get more... of that meeting. So it highlighted, I think, to all of us that we need to get more information out there about all the benefits to 3-1-1, the challenges, the lessons learned, and get more people to use it. And I think every time someone calls and has a positive experience with 3-1-1 on the other end, then they become a supporter of our 3-1-1 service. So I know you're making great headway in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, as we kind of are cleaning up some unfinished items before the council, if you recall, we launched our reverse mass notification system just two days before a pretty large snowstorm. And at that time, we gave a briefing to the council, if you recall, the Monday of that week. And there were some questions about being residents that wished to not participate in the system. And we thought this was going to be an easy process to deal with, and it's turned out to be a very difficult and complicated process. So we'd like to share with the council what we've discovered and make a recommendation as to how we move forward. Adelita Hernandez is here. She has become our main person dealing with the mass notification software. She is also our voice on Twitter. So if you ever, if you ever hear about the, we've talked about Crickets, we'll now talk about Tweets. Adelita's done a tremendous job. We have, what, 500, 600 followers on Twitter?
We have almost 1,400 followers.
Well, that showed last time I checked in. So 1,400 followers on Twitter. So we really have found, because she is so diligent about tweeting, she tweets everywhere about city of Evanston business. And with 1,400 followers, I think that shows, that's about half of our Facebook. We have about, what, 34, 3500 folks following us on Facebook. Second only did the city of Chicago in the state of Illinois for a municipal Facebook page. My guess is that we're pretty far up there as far as municipal Twitter accounts. So just wanted to recognize, Adelita doesn't come to the council very often, so I wanted to recognize her good work with that. But she's here tonight to talk about the research we've done about excluding folks from our mass notification service and the challenges that presents. Mr. Hernandez, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Clerk, and City Manager. My name is Adelita Hernandez, and I'm the Community Information Specialist in the City Manager's Office. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the reverse mass notification system. I'm just going to give a brief summary, just to refresh everybody's minds about the functionality of the system and how we use it to better communicate with our residents. So the reverse mass notification enables the city to notify residents and businesses in case of an emergency, as we outlined in the policy. We also have the capability of doing non-emergency community alerts. And there are several paths of delivery, including voice, email, and text messaging. As you know, February 1st, the city of Evanston rolled out the system, and the following day, we used it to notify residents about conditions regarding the blizzard. So we used the system right away. And of course, we had some hiccups that we've tried to iron on as we continue to work with the system. We use it to inform residents of threats to the health and safety, and we do emergencies such as weather conditions and other police activity. There is a capability for residents or businesses to manage preferences on the city website. It's connected to the 3-1-1 citizen dashboard of the website. And businesses can choose to select their preferences regarding how they want to be notified, and what order they want to be notified. And also, they can select several locations, so they can do home, work, their child's school. And we also have the capability of selecting non-emergency situations for people that do want to receive them. Since we've rolled out, we've used the system 10 times. Three of those alerts were related to the blizzard, and they were citywide alerts. And seven of those alerts were geographic, and they were at the discretion of the city manager or the police chief. And I did a little breakdown so you guys can see what the incidents were involving, two shooting incidents, home invasion, armed robbery, crime alert, bomb threat, and a scam alert. And Sue Ponorelli, as well of myself, have worked on messaging to the community regarding these incidents. Currently, staff is utilizing white page and opt-in data to alert residents and businesses. With the white page information, we do have a capability for residents to opt out. And obviously, when they register online, they can choose to go back in there and remove information. So if they suddenly decide they don't want to get text messages, at any time, they can choose to modify their preferences. We are looking into 9-1-1 data. We've obtained the database, and it is the most accurate database that is available, and we have the ability to use it. And we are looking into upgrading the system to be able to use 9-1-1 data. However, with that system, we do not have the capability of opting residents out of the notifications, but they would be used for life-threatening emergencies or declared emergencies through, as specified through the policy. So it is our recommendation that we proceed to use 9-1-1 data. And in the case of non-emergencies, use white page or opt-in information. So residents that don't want to be notified will not. But in case of an emergency, everybody in that region, or even, or if it is a citywide alert, would be notified. So that's all I have. If you guys have any questions for me?
And perhaps I can add a couple more details to that. As Adelita mentioned, we've used it 10 times. Right after the snowstorm, we had a small number of individuals, and I believe that the number is under 10?
Six.
Six individuals citywide who'd requested to be taken out. We've not really had any requests since then, I think partially because we've gotten better at using it. The third incident that we used, it was an unfortunate shooting at McDonald's. And we used it for a half-mile radius. And we received two very different kinds of comments. For those people who were very close to the situation, we received phone calls thanking us for letting them know. For those people who were a little bit further away, we received calls from people saying, "Why are you bothering me?" From that point on, all the other uses have only been in a quarter-mile radius. And to my understanding, we have not received one phone call from anyone saying, "Why are you bothering me?" So I think as we've learned to do this, that for things that are more neighborhood-based, that quarter mile seems to be sufficient. People appreciate, they sense that that's their neighborhood, that quarter mile. So we really feel that we will let those six people know that by changing to the 9-1-1 data, we're not able to exclude them. I think we've learned enough about how best to use it. We will not be overusing it. Certainly, we were in a unique circumstance, literally 24 hours after launching it, having a very large snowstorm. And I think we wanted to err on the side of making people notify. And I think it was that third call, people were tired of the snow, they were tired of us. And that's, I think, all, looking back on it, very reasonable. So we just wanted to come this evening and share the information with you. We will let those six individuals know that we'll not be able to have them opt out. But hopefully, they'll understand that we've learned how to use the system, we'll be prudent in using it. I think that 9-1-1 data clearly is much more accurate, but it comes with strings from AT&amp;T, and we felt that it was important to use it as we move forward.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, just, I'd like to take a few final minutes this evening. We've been covering over the last several months many of the city council's goals. And I wanted to spend a couple minutes talking about some of the goals we've not talked about at the council and get some feedback from you this evening, that if, in the next month or two, if you'd like to get additional information. The goal of affordable housing, the council had a presentation a couple months ago from our housing team. As the council's aware, the Rules Committee will begin receiving update reports from your boards and commissions. The first report will be from the Housing Commission at your July meeting. Those meetings will be here in this room televised. I think that we will have given you a fair update as to what's going on with our affordable housing initiatives. We are also getting ready to roll out a program for marketing the NSP-2 properties that'll be ready for sale. And we'll be coming back to you in the next couple of weeks with an update there. In the area of budget planning and capital improvement program planning, again, I think the community's fairly well been notified of our plans. We'll be back to the council the first meeting in August with an update on the operating budget. And we continue to work on the capital side. In the area of the Climate Action Plan, you received an update this evening. In the areas of economic development, since seven of 10 of you serve on the city's Economic Development Committee, I think you are kept up to breast with our economic development activities, perhaps better through that group than any other way. And so unless I'm told by the council otherwise, we'll just continue to have that be the primary way that you get information about our economic development activities. Efficiency and effectiveness of services, I think you've gotten a good briefing tonight. Really, the 3-1-1 process, what we do with Facebook, Twitter, are big parts of that. As you know, we were recently recognized by the Illinois Policy Institute for our transparency of our city website. So I think we're making good progress there. In the area of federal, state, regional government affairs, Matt Swankowski, our intergovernmental affairs coordinator, really done an excellent job, I think, of staying on top of issues at all levels of government. As was mentioned earlier, Mayor Tisdale and I did go to Washington a couple of weeks ago for a lobby trip that contained an airplane that had a malfunction that we had to run across the airport to catch another plane, barely made our appointments, ran back to the airport, and came back all in one day. So for those who may think that lobbying in Washington is glamorous and expensive stuff, I hate to disappoint them, but it really isn't. So we continue to do well, I think, in Washington. The Evanston Day in Springfield, again, was a great success this year. Lots of activity. Alderman Tendem, Alderman Burris went down for the Northwest Municipal Conference Lobby Day. Mayor Tisdale and I went for the Illinois Municipal League Lobby Day. I think we have more connection with our state representatives than this council's had in a very long time. And I think we're beginning to see good dividends from that. On the regional level, we stay in touch with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. The CTA is moving forward with its Viadec projects, and the Economic Development Committee is going to be hearing a request for some fee waivers from the CTA next week regarding the Viadec projects they're moving forward with. I met with the new executive director of Metra a few weeks ago, and he is committed to come for a meeting. And our Public Works staff has already seen Metra staff in the field doing work in anticipation of their new boss's visit to Evanston, hopefully in August or September. So those things are moving forward. Matt also follows issues with the RTA and PACE. So I think we've been able to fulfill the council's goal there. In the area of lakefront development, the council has a committee focusing on this issue. They met as recently as last week. And we'll be coming back to the full council with a report, I believe we're shooting for September. Relations with Northwestern University, another council goal. You heard a little bit in Catherine's presentation about a class project that dealt with electric vehicle charging. I think we've done a tremendous effort of involving students and classes and faculty members in the work of the city like really never before. This spring quarter, we had students either through internships or work studies all over, helping us with a whole variety of different projects. We continue to work closely with the university. City School Committee was just last week, and a good open dialogue was had by all. And I think certainly the community appreciates those discussions. Finally, we continue to work with the Athletic Department. The mayor will be unveiling a street sign recognizing the NCAA championship of the women's lacrosse team on Thursday. And we're also working on the next Evanston Day at the NU football game, which will be on September the 8th. So things are well there with the university. Police and fire pension funding issues has not been a focus of discussion. Local issues have not been a focal focus of discussion in Springfield this spring, but we'll continue to focus there. In the area of the Robert Crown Center improvements, we continue to move forward and are on track to release, come back to you in the month of September, with a proposed RFP to send out for the Robert Crown project. So that is on track. Safety issues, the council has discussed on several different occasions. And the issue of youth engagement, I think largely was covered by the mayor's summit that was held a few weeks ago. So those are the city council's 13 goals. We continue to work on them. If you feel that you don't have enough information about our progress in any of them, I would appreciate hearing from you this evening or otherwise. And we can schedule additional updates. But I think we've, I think did a pretty good job of keeping abreast of our progress there.
Does anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you.
That concludes the presentation.
Does anyone want to make a movement to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded. City Clerk?
Alderman Fisk, Alderman Rathwaith, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Holmes, Alderman Tendem, Alderman Grover, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Burris.
Nine to nothing. We are adjourned before 10:00.